Okay, it's 5:00 PM. We'll get started. I'll call the Order of the Village Board of Oregon for Monday, August 18th, 2025. Esther Clark, call roll, please.
Higgins.
Here.
Kirchdorfer.
Here.
Knipfer.
Here.
Marks.
Here.
McDaniel.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
And Van Campen.
Here, and welcome to our newest trustee, Rick Marks. Item three, approval of July 30th, 2025, and August 4th, 2025 Village Board meeting minutes, if correct, and correctional mistakes, if any, staff recommendation motion to approve. Tom and Amanda. Questions, comments, corrections? Very none. Motion by Kirchdorfer, second by Peterson. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four, public appearances, comments, and communications items for discussion and/or possible action, a public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Under the open meetings law, this agenda allows board members to receive information and to ask questions of representatives to facilitate a better understanding of the information. Board members may discuss procedural matters relating to the information, such as whether the information should be directed to staff, referred to a committee, or placed on a future board agenda. However, board members may not expand their discussion beyond such procedural manners. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a maximum three-minute per speaker. Anyone here for public comments? Please come up, sir. Thank you. State your name, address.
My name is Travis.
Last name, sir?
Travis Yates.
Okay, could you pull the microphone closely?
Yes, is this better?
Yes, that's great, and you have about three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council. Council, my name is Travis. Some of you guys might not be aware of the small storm drain that's installed, being installed currently, happening on the South Main Street. This project has come along, has, this project comes from a longstanding concern from several of us who have dealt with backyard erosion from over five to seven years. While we appreciate the effort to address the drainage issue, I wanted to share my concern about how the project has impacted my property. On August 17th, 2023, almost two years from today, I contacted the Village of Oregon to discuss replacing the sidewalk for cosmetic reasons while I replaced my driveway. I was told the sidewalk wasn't in any ongoing project, and I decided to pay for it myself. Unfortunately, this current project required my driveway approach to be dug up. During the removal process, I, the contractors chipped sidewalks, chipped sidewalks in front of every house on the block, including mine. I have photos available if anyone is interested. I reached out to both the Director of Public Works and the Project Manager. They did visit the site and discussed possible alternatives, but emphasized that it is only cosmetic and the integrity of the concrete is fine. The very next day, the concrete was bored without any follow-up, which a little bit sucked because I was debating on paying this out of pocket, depending on the alternatives coming from the Village of Oregon on that. I haven't really heard anything back from either of these people. I assume the project is considered complete at this point. I did notice that this Sunday, I have a visible, a visible, visible crack about one inch wide and about two to four inches long between the driveway and the sidewalk that appears to have maybe been missed during the rebuild. I have photos available, too, if anyone wants to see those. I plan to continue having this conversation with Citi, I think Lauren, Lauren, too, but I wanted to come here today to kind of just express my frustration. The work just feels a little rushed from these contractors. It seems a little careless as well. I just hope future projects going forward, we'll have a little bit more detailed communication. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you say you had pictures?
Oh, yeah. I don't have pictures for all of you, but I have.
Yeah, just that is great.
Yeah. We'll just pass them around. Can we keep these?
Yeah.
And just a procedural.
Thanks.
Will you get someone reach out to him to talk about this further? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Travis, I didn't get the address.
765 South Main Street.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comments? Okay, moving on. Approval amount, vouchers and the amount of, and I'm going to read a corrected amount. The amount in the packet is correct, but the, on the agenda is incorrect, so I'm going to read the correct amount, and that is $1,607,730.9. Looking for motion to approve. Amanda and Paige. Questions, comments? Len, please.
I have two. The first is on page 14, 2045, the Dade County Treasure, DadeCom costs. Could someone just explain that to me?
I can't.
Oh, thank you.
DadeCom is the 911 center, emergency system, and each community pays in to support that each year.
Oh.
If you would like the long, much longer history, I'd be happy to take over a cup of coffee.
Okay.
And I can name names.
Martin, is that adequate?
Yep.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Okay, and then my second one, I don't know the page number, it's 1265 Spring Sludge Hauling. Now, I think I actually know what this is, but I want to see if I'm right about this. I don't know where it is, Lauren, I'm sorry.
It's all good. Just 126. There it is.
Um, can, do you want to tell me what you think it is, or you want me to explain it? No, I want you to just tell me, because I'm pretty, I don't know. So, we do have large sludge tanks over at our wastewater treatment plant. It's the big blue cylinder right on the road there. It's probably the most visible part of the plant, and twice a year, all of that sludge has to go somewhere. So, we contract with Bytek to pump it all out and take it out to local farm fields and spread it for willing farmers. This was the spring version of this. We'll also have it done again this fall. Dang, I was right. I should have just gone for it. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Questions on the vouchers? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. We have a motion by Amanda, second by Paige.
Knipfer?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Van Campen?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Higgins?
Yes.
Thank you. Item six, consent agenda, that's item 6A through 6F. Staff recommendation motion to approve is sent agenda items as presented. Amanda? And Paige? Questions or comments on these items? Sorry?
Said yay.
Yes.
Oh, yes, okay. Okay, we have a motion by Amanda, second by Paige. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, reports of committees items for discussion and/or possible action, A, Park Board, one, adoption of the Oregon Conservation Parks Plan, Park Board Planning Commission, and staff recommendation motion to approve as presented. Get a motion on the table, please. Amanda and Paige again. Elise.
Yep, I'm over here. Yeah, I can give a little background on this project for the board members that weren't here last summer when we kicked this off, but we have the opportunity to work with UW Madison student, Morgan Hack, who was in her senior year of her Landscape Architecture Bachelor's Degree last year. So, all the seniors have to do a capstone project. Lynn actually found this project, and we were able to apply to the professor and submit our project plan, which was for a master plan for all of our conservation parks, we were calling them. So, kind of everything from Alpine to Baroque and Netherwood to Jefferson Streets, so that block of Keller Alpine, Lerner Park, and a few other, yeah, there's six, yeah, we got used to naming them all. So, some of the smaller parks in there, too. So, the goals were connectivity of the parks, having understanding of how people are using the parks, how they like to use them in the future, a lot of environmental, just research into conditions, invasive species, what should be done in the future, better visibility and accessibility of the parks, that kind of thing. So, Morgan was great to work with. She did a wonderful job, and then the final product was this master plan. So, it's now been presented to Park Board Planning Commission, and they're both recommending approval to adopt it as a master plan. So, if this is adopted as a master plan, then we can continue to keep some of those projects that Morgan had identified, recommended in her plan in our CIP, but we need to have it as an adopted plan. But lots of good feedback. Planning Commission said they felt, you know, they were really impressed with the product. It's very high quality and something similar we'd see to a project we would, you know, be paying a planning firm for, but received a lot of great free student work and hopefully good experience for her as well.
Okay, questions? Tim?
This, this again, was free to the village?
Correct. Yeah, I offered many times to, you know, provide refunds for gas and printing and other things like that. It was, it was nice. It was part of a class, so she had a lot of deadlines as part of that class. So, we wasn't, I didn't have to manage kind of all those steps in between, but yes, this was a free service to the village. We had, we have $60,000 in the CIP last year for potential planning work. We probably would have hired a landscape architecture firm or something like that, but that borrowed money is now going to be able to be used for other park-related products or other CIP projects.
Maybe we should name a park after her at some point. This is phenomenal work.
Yes, it is.
It's really, really true.
Tom?
I just, was there, when the parks plan, is there any kind of timeline to it at all? Or this is, I think you made some references to be in the CIP, but I don't know where it was.
So, she had an implementation plan with all of the projects. I don't believe she had too much as far as like specific years or prioritization, which went over the other. So, Lauren and Nick and Eric, I know, kind of took the first stab at the parks plan, the CIP, rather, and broke out some of those projects. So, there's some boardwalk, there's a natural play area, some invasive species removal, establishment of a prairie, kind of the upland area that we refer to as the West Side Park, as one of those six parks. So, those are all broken out in the CIP, but yeah, she didn't have a schedule kind of recommended. They're all various locations and scales and prices.
Lynn?
I also just wanted to point out two things. First, Morgan spent a lot of time with Oregon Rotary because they have a strong footprint in this area, and they are very happy with this plan and, and being able to work with Morgan. So, I think that's important because we have a very significant community partner there, and they have kind of given their seal of approval in terms of her recommendations. She spent a lot of time with them, along with lots of other community groups. She talked to two childcare centers in the area that utilize the parks. She did a community survey, talked with the library, things like that. So, there's a lot of community involvement that comes into this as well that I think is really helpful. And then the second thing I was just going to point out is that, yes, it's zero dollars, which we love to say, very under budget, but Elise did spend quite a bit of time getting her set up for success, and so you deserve a little bit of credit here that this comes out of a great deal of mentoring, and I think that that's, I'm really grateful that you were willing to do that, to give her the experience and to give us something that's very useful.
Okay. We have a motion by Amanda, second by Paige. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 7A2, revised proposal from Rutler Corporation for Gary Dish Park for design permitting bidding and construction phase services in a total estimated amount of $76,125. Board and staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented.
All right, I'll start, and Lauren can fill in any, any gaps here, because we're pointing to each other. So, we, we reached out to Rutler earlier this year to have us, help us with the park planning effort for Gary Dish Park, which is in Phase Two of Autumn Ridge Neighborhood, so right off Foxfield Road where it comes out onto Wolf Street there, just south of that intersection. It's obviously one of our newer parks. The developer really just seeded it and left it as is. I wonder if any of you have, I know some of you live in the area, but it's a fairly sloped park. There are a couple of, there's one platform specifically where a playground was, was planned to be located, and then a large kind of multi-use field. So, initially, we had just gotten a proposal to have Rutler, who is, they're a landscape architecture and civil engineering firm. They're based in Stevens Point area. They helped us design the Highlands and Netherwood Park, as well as J.C. Community Park, all those upgrades that we've done recently. So, reached out to them to have us help mostly with the playground area and kind of access there. We also wanted to do a pour-in place that rubberized surface for the playground for accessibility, and that's what our park plan recommends as well. So, they gave us that proposal back in February, and we kind of put a pin in this while I was out this spring, but over the spring and early summer, Lauren and her team had Rutler back out here for some work on J.C. Park, and they were out on the site and kind of discussing just potential usability, how we can really maximize this, this great space that we have, and a couple of recommendations were, one from our parks, folks in Public Works is to have irrigation added to this field. The grass is really, there's a lot of bedrock here, and so the grass seed is just right there. The grass isn't really established super well, and if we want to have this as a full-size field, which is a big need for some of our community sports organizations, the grass will need to be maintained, and obviously some years, like this summer, not a whole lot of irrigation happening, but other years definitely needed more than others. So, some of the changes that would need to happen to have that irrigation come in would be addition of topsoil and grading there, and then obviously installation of the irrigation system itself. And then we also had a couple other changes around the playground area to have kind of a accessible viewing platform for the field. It would be, I think, very kind of intrusive to the space and very cost prohibitive to have a whole ramp down to the field where if there were any folks with mobility issues that wanted to see what was happening on the field, they'd get a really great view just kind of from that playground area. So, that's what an expanded, the expanded kind of paved area looks like. There's some additional grading happening around the playground, and then you can kind of see that kind of pink red area near the parking is a ramp, kind of a switchback ramp that would be ADA accessible. There's a little bit of work around a stormwater pond to the north, but Lauren, was there any other additions to the scope? So, what's in front of you tonight? Is it revised scope from Rutler that would capture this expanded scope of the project for the park improvements? Our hope is to bid this out in the November timeframe if we can. We're planning, if this can move forward, a neighborhood meeting, probably sometime early fall here, mostly feedback on the playground, colors and equipment types and things like that, too. This has been a really long time coming for this neighborhood, but also letting them know about some of the thoughts for the field, and then incorporating that into the design, getting it out to bed later in the year for spring construction through the fall. Did they miss anything else in the scope?
I think the only thing that I would add is that we've been in pretty close contact with particularly Oregon Youth Soccer, but keeping them in the loop on this, and we've gotten some generally universal support for the idea of using this area as a full-size field, and it wouldn't certainly just serve soccer, but sports like rugby, lacrosse also would be able to use this. So, real significant positive support for those groups, and certainly working with them to make sure it's a functional facility for what they need.
Okay. Let's get a motion on table before we discuss Amanda, Paige. Okay, three foot three.
Come on, you guys, have her leave or what?
Okay, questions or comments for Elise or Lauren? Tim?
I have a question. Do the, do the sports clubs contribute to the cost of these fields?
So, that's a tricky question. I think for the J.C. history, I will ask Elise to fill in some of that.
Yeah, some of the sports organizations were involved, probably a decade before J.C. Community Park was constructed with a lot of initial ideas, and there was some donation from some of the organizations over there. They're all on the donor wall over there, but in the past, other projects, no Highlands of Netherwood, for example, there was no specific contribution from any community or youth sports organization, but J.C. Park for sure.
I guess I was thinking more in terms of operating expenses. Is there any ongoing contribution that they make to the fields they use?
So, financially.
In some cases, they mow them, right?
Yes, and that's what I was going to mention is financially, I'm, I'm not aware of any ongoing contributions, although they often will buy, you know, particular equipment that they need, goals, that kind of thing above and beyond. They do, soccer specifically does tend to mow and stripe the fields that they use for Highlands, as well as for the new J.C. Community Park fields. We have started to take that back a little bit now that we have Eric Swaska on staff. He has the training to maintain those really finicky, very high-end fields, and so with their cooperation, we've kind of taken that back, and that's what we'd envision in this situation is another one of those fields that we would maintain internally to, to keep it up to par.
I believe we're charging some fees.
Yeah, there are, there are athletic field reservation fees that the, the groups pay.
Okay. Lynn, I think I saw your hand up.
I was just going to say that same thing.
Oh.
It's been a long discussion at Park Board about field reservation and those fees. We are by and large, I would say, less than some of our community neighbors, but we do have a fee structure for reservation and usage.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion by Amanda, second by Paige. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Sustainability Committee, one, Resolution Number 25-26, a resolution authorizing the submittal of an application for Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Urban Forestry Grant and/or Urban Forestry Catastrophic Storm Grant Programs. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Tom and Rick. Thank you. And did you want to add anything?
Sure. Martin indicated this a couple of years ago to me, that this is something that the village does not have, and so we have been playing around with the idea of applying for this grant. Sorry, I need to go backwards for a second. An urban forestry plan is something that municipalities have in order to make conscious decisions about planting, maintaining, removing trees in a very specific and strategic way, and the Village of Oregon does not have one of those currently in place that's comprehensive. And so Martin and I, Martin had mentioned it a little while ago, and so the Sustainability Committee has made it somewhat of a focus. The DNR has a grant, it's called a regular grant. It's higher in award. I can't, off the top of my head, actually know the amount. Is it 10,000?
I think so.
I think it's 10,000. And the village has not applied for that grant before. We've applied for two of the smaller ones, but not the larger one. And I spoke to Brian Wall through the DNR, and he suggested that we apply for this. He thinks that we would be a great applicant for it, and so we need to do a resolution, and then Lauren and I will, will be working on the application or are working on the application right now. This is already in the CIP for next year, so this money would obviously just aid in that, but we, we do have it planned because it is crucial at this point in order to have sort of a comprehensive municipal ordinance system and just a plan for our public work staff to run off of. So, this is just that resolution and application approval.
Okay. Questions, comments?
This is just for the grant? We're, we're not doing, proving anything else right now?
Yes, they, they need a resolution of authorizing that we can submit it.
Okay. All right, motion by Tom, second by Rick. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, unfinished business items for discussion and/or possible action, A, response to the Oregon Area Fire EMS District Commission Letter Regarding Future Facility Staff, Future Facility Project. Staff recommendation motion to approve response letter as presented. Amanda? And Tom? Martin?
Sure. So, we had the joint meeting with the district back on July 30th, a couple weeks ago, and we had the presentation from their facility planning consultant at that meeting and learned a little bit about their, their long-range facility needs and plans. And we got a letter from the District Commission Chair and Fire Chief asking the municipal partners some questions about where we stand on some of the different components of this project and process, and so wanting to make sure that we, we get back to them in a timely fashion as they had requested, having this on the agenda, and then also taking the liberty to, to make a draft for the, the board to, to react to. I guess really, in putting this draft together, I, I used our existing adopted planning documents, our comprehensive plan, our downtown master plan, used the presentation and information that was presented from their consultant, Wendell Five Bugles, and so put together a pretty comprehensive letter designed to, to really sort of put out there transparently where the village stands on some of these different issues and some of the, the process involved, so that everybody's working with very clear information on how we can keep this process moving forward. I'm happy to, to go into it further. Obviously, I had a lot of information in there and don't want to belabor the point. So, let me know if I can answer any questions or dive any deeper into any of this. So let me know if I can answer any questions or dive any deeper into any of this.
Lauren to go first.
Well, first off, thank, thank you, Martin, for putting thoughts, I think, that were in all of our heads kind of together. I won't say succinctly, but very completely. It, it, it gave good information of why I was feeling the way I was feeling and what I thought about the, the whole scenario. You know, the, the ultimate public safety issue would be a two-station solution, whether that's affordable or not. We're still just missing that information and I thought you did a nice job of bringing that forward to say, you know, we'd like a two, a single station, but two stations is better for the public safety. And, but what does that cost? And, and you know, it, it made a nice represent, representation of, I guess, a lot of the discussions we've had and appreciate your drafting this for us.
Tim?
Okay, I have lots of thoughts, so hopefully this will be organized. First, I, I have had a lot of people ask me of late, people who aren't regularly in this room, why we are considering the senior center, the fire station and the downtown master plan almost as if they're three separate projects? And how are you not sitting down at one point and saying, given the landscape, the real estate we have with the old library, the old post office, the existing senior center, the existing fire station, the existing old village hall, and coming up with one plan that says, how could we fit all of this in here most effectively? And I don't really have a good answer for why we're not doing it that way, other than just kind of the timing and momentum, which doesn't sound strategic to me. And I would much prefer that we stepped back and tried to do that. But I also recognize we're five miles down the road on the senior center already and that's not a simple response. But I don't really have an answer when constituents ask me that. The second point I want to make is I, I, I feel like a lot of people have sort of jumped on this idea of a second station serving the community best. I do not believe that the data we saw at the fire commission draws you to that conclusion. I believe that there have been a lot of people who've seen sort of a shorthand version of that presentation and jumped to that conclusion, but I disagree with that conclusion. And what I saw was data that suggests a second station could improve response times by what I considered a fairly small amount, from about 63% to about 70%, but at potentially a significant additional cost. And so I continue to maintain that if we could find a space downtown, I realize I'm going to need a magic wand to find it, that could do a single three-acre fire station, that that should be our priority going forward. I also recognize that we asked for feedback and we asked for it very quickly, so we're going to get kind of these responses and some of the ones I've seen coming back from the townships are veering off into some crazy directions. So I really did appreciate the fact that you laid out a compelling argument for why all the members of the district should pay their share of the costs and not argue about, oh, we won't use the ladder truck, so we don't want to pay for that. Well, then the village isn't going to pay for the water tenders that went out to the prairie fires. So it, it's a silly argument. You're either in the district or you're, you're not. So I appreciated that part of it. The other part I want to push back on is the idea of consolidation. I don't think consolidation will affect this decision because in my opinion consolidation will be at the administrative level of fire departments. You will still need fire trucks and ambulances close to the point of incident and most consolidated fire stage, fire districts wind up with more stations. If you look at the city of Madison, they have a ton of fire stations. And so it, we're unlikely to build a station that then would become redundant because there's something else with a partnership with Stoughton or Verona or something, in my opinion. So that's a lot of thoughts. I'm not sure where that leads us in terms of this letter.
What else? Amanda?
So, I mean, those are interesting thoughts, Tim, and I don't want to dismiss any of that because I think that's all worthy of discussion. I was just going to say, you know, as a village board member, yeah, I remember 20 years ago, what, be, you know, I think it was 20 years ago, 15 maybe, whatever, when we had planners come in and look at a downtown master plan. Remember the Lego meeting? Anybody here remember that? Some people do. Where we, I think it was Van de Wally and Associates and they had a layout of downtown and they're like, okay, here's Legos and this could use this color Lego for the senior center and this color for the fire station. This, you know what I mean? Like, we looked at try a way to make a future plan for all of those things in the downtown space. The problem is the downtown space, no matter how you slice it, is still very, very small, okay? It just, it isn't going to fit everything. It's just not. And, and there are businesses downtown that are unwilling to sell to us and we're not going to talk about the E-word, ED. Okay, eminent domain. So we're not going to do that. We don't want that. That's bad. That's a last resort. So, so you know, those businesses have to be able to exist where they currently are. We can't make them move. And that was a problem. And so we had to move forward with the best we could under those circumstances. And so that's, as a, just as a way of explaining how we got to this point. It's not that we didn't consider how it would all fit. It's that, it's that, you know, we had to move on and the downtown is very small. So we moved ahead with, we had to prioritize projects. We moved ahead with the library. Well, we moved that out of downtown because of space and the thing. We had to move forward with the senior center. We're going to have to look at the fire station, but now we're running out of space and that's kind of just the way it is. Somebody was not going to get what they wanted in location. Fortunately, we're, you know, we are part of a bigger district that has land, right? I mean, there might be a different place that isn't right downtown, but it's still within a minute of downtown, right? That we could still have a, a, a fire station. So I, I see potential. I think, I, I just wanted to kind of speak to that, you know? Like, it's not that it wasn't considered, it just wasn't going to work.
I appreciate all that. I appreciate all that. The only thing I'll push back on is I don't want the idea of maybe we can find this other place that's just as good to not be based on data. I want that to be based on data. We have good GIS data to tell us where to put it and what our response times will be to various parts of the district. And I'd like to keep it focused on that rather than, oh, I have this idea or, oh, here's this piece of property. So that's my only point to that. But thank you. Appreciate the perspective on the historical approach.
Other comments? Lynn?
I agree with my board members. I think this memo is great. I think the only thing I want to add or not, not even add to your memo, Martin, but I think emphasizing in my mind, even if we could grab the magic wand and find the space downtown, will we outgrow that into? I'm nervous about trying to fit something downtown because we want it downtown and then in 20 years, somebody has to answer for why are we tight again already? I sincerely hope that the village is going to continue to grow the way that it has grown. And so I, I just think that I don't want to make a decision now that doesn't live long enough as a good decision. And I think seeing it in that light, maybe we could find something that fits us now downtown by being really creative, but would it fit us in 20 years? And I just don't see that possibility.
Other comments? Okay, I would just, one, you know, it's a terrific memo and it, it really lays things out. To touch on Lynn's point, I think that if you were to talk to the people that dedicated the station downtown and I think in 2022 and told them that in 20 years we'd be talking about it being grossly undersized, they wouldn't have believed it. And, and I'm afraid if we spend the money downtown now, in 20 years, they're going to be looking back two generations and saying, why do they try and make this work downtown instead of just fixing the problem once and for all? And I, I believe the fix is a three-acre site, a new main station and move on from there. The other, only other point I would make is that Martin has a place on this letter for me to sign. I wish that I had written this letter, but I didn't. I would be more than comfortable to have Martin's signature on this letter. I would wonder your comments on that or general agreement or?
I would not agree.
How about a co, how about a co-sign then?
No, it, it, it needs to come from the board. This has to be the, a message from the elected officials that this is the policy of the board, not its administrator.
I guess I'm overruled.
I would agree with Martin.
I'll do it if you want me to, but I, I would disagree with that.
I think this has to represent our village position. And as that Martin can say, well, I think it's what, this is what they want. We have to say what we want. This is, this is the best articulation I've seen of it.
Okay, that's fine. Other comments?
Yeah, to that point, I think it's complicated by the fact that you're on the commission. In terms of this letter being from the village, but you're also part of the fire commission, I think that that's going to be complicated. I don't know, maybe, maybe more for you than for anybody else, so maybe it's nothing. You don't think so? Candy and Martin are like, I don't see why.
I'm not concerned. Frankly, I think my opinion is pretty well-known already. Okay, so we have a motion by Amanda, second by Tom. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Oh, Tim, one nay.
Yep, I got it.
Thanks.
As far as your, your dual role, I think the, the fact that the entire board just voted on this letter is further satisfaction of any issue with respect to those.
I appreciate that. Okay, let's see, AB, a draft in 2026 to 2035 capital improvement plan. Martin?
Who are you calling?
My goodness.
Yeah.
Lauren?
Can you switch me over? Yeah.
You were denied on phone a friend.
Yeah. Is there another lifeline? All right. So we're on our third meeting reviewing the, the 10-year capital improvement plan here. So coming out of the last meeting, my focus for this version of our draft CIP was really to integrate the, that data for the, the equalized value that we talked about at the meeting last time and see what that did to some of our calculations and then really focusing on those two facility projects, the senior center and the fire station. And so trying to really build in some really conservative scenarios for those two projects, just so that we can feel a little comfortable about, you know, taking those things on, taking both those projects on and knowing where we'll, where we'll be at from a financial impact standpoint. Again, in a worst-case scenario, hoping that things look a little bit better when we actually get to the time to spend that money. So I guess to start, the preliminary equalized values, which are now final equalized values as of the end of last week, had our value coming in obviously a lot higher than our conservative estimate. So we always estimate 2% increases year over year. The increase from 24 to 25 was 9% higher than 2024. So obviously that's 7% higher than what we had drafted, so that has a positive impact on the debt capacity calculation. So our legal limits are based upon equalized value, 5% of our equalized value. And obviously if it goes up more, we have a lot more capacity. So I'll, I'll show you what that looks like in just a second. And then for the two projects, I added in a few, couple million more dollars on the senior center project. And then for the fire station project, again, sort of talking about what we just talked about at the last item, we just have a lot of uncertainty about what are we talking about exactly? And so how do you model for that in a CIP? Obviously, if it's a much smaller project, maybe we're just renovating the existing station. Maybe we're doing a second station and it's a smaller facility as a second station. Or we're doing a three-acre, full-blown, new emergency services facility. Obviously, that's a much bigger project. So I went with the biggest one, the full emergency services project in this version of the CIP. So try to build in a couple of years of expenses. So knowing that we may need to acquire property, obviously there's a, a, a lot of cost for design alone. So bring on the architects and engineers to, to do that part of the project. So building in some costs there for one year and then breaking up a, a very large project over two years as well. So I have four years of cost broken up between 28 to 2031. And so altogether, it would represent almost a $30 million all-in project with the village representing about 70% of that cost. So, so taking a look at our charts and I'll just note related to a couple of other items on the agenda. The West Side Conservation Parks improvements are in there. So they've been in there since the first version and we used, and Lauren used in putting this together, the conservation plan, Morgan's plan that she put together to put these different costs together. So she has kind of a multi-phased implementation of that plan. So that, that is in there and we're trying to accommodate multiple phases of potential improvements to that park. So on the fire side, you can see I built in the new costs here for a very large project and then also moved back the potential ladder truck because obviously we need to have the project done to accommodate that. And then on the senior center side, built those costs in as well. So adding a couple of million more dollars into that. And then also kind of breaking out a couple of the different funding sources for that project as well. All right, so on the impact to property taxes under this, these changes, looking over on the left side here. So we've changed our equalized value. So we updated the numbers there, got the actual numbers in. And then that kind of changes all, everything downstream. So all those numbers look a lot larger. And then on the right-hand side, we see the impact to property taxes on a sample home, which is $420,000 we're using with inflation and appreciation of the property built in over time. So between 2026, 2027 and throughout, you can see each year, property taxes would go up as a portion of the debt service continues to rise. So how much you pay in taxes, this is the portion that goes to debt service. You can see kind of about an 80 to almost $100 increase each year, every year for about the next 11 years to accommodate all of the CIP as we have it now. So going from about $833 up to about $1,700 about 11 years from now. And you can see it kind of tails off as the CIP horizon gets passed. So pretty even stair stepping every year to try to accommodate these costs in. So there's that one year of a huge spike because of the projects that we're doing. We've, we've stair-stepped that in as best that we can. On the debt capacity analysis, so again, the equalized value, the actual number now is in the 9% increase and then the downstream being affected by that. So if you remember the last version, we were at 43% of our debt limit currently. Well, now we are magically at 40% of our debt limit because of that. So, so obviously you can see the capacity has increased. And so now trying to accommodate some of these changes that we included in the last version, which was a little bit smaller of a fire station project and a little bit smaller of a senior center project at the. which was a little bit smaller of a fire station project and a little bit smaller of a senior center project at the time. We had just gotten up to 75%, which is our self-imposed policy. And we'd breached it for a couple of years there, just hovering right around that 75%. So in this case, especially building in that very large fire station project, you see we get a little bit more over that 75% for a few years, starting in 2031 through 2035. So I guess moving forward, going into the, to next, the following week here, in two weeks for the next review of this. What I really want to try to get to, because we're, we're getting close to wrapping up the, this process here, looking for approval of this on the September 15th meeting. What I really want to try to get to is just making sure that this balances out to that 75% so that we're not approving a CIP that exceeds our policy. And so really, the, the main thing that, that's driving this is that fire station project. All else being equal, assuming we're going to keep all the other projects in and everything where they're positioned, where they're positioned. So for the fire station, obviously we have a lot to learn and know about what that project could be. But I would assume that we need to show that being pushed out a little bit farther, more towards that at least 2032 to 2035 time range in order to accommodate a project of that scale and stay within our self-imposed debt policy. Now again, we're assuming some pretty conservative numbers on all of our variables. So by the time we get to say 26, 27, or 28, and we're looking at this, the numbers might look a lot better and maybe we're thinking a fire station project is more reasonable and can be moved up to the 2030, 2031 time range again. But for the purposes of planning, I would say that we need to start thinking about targeting it for that 32 to 35 range, especially a project of that scale. So looking for any feedback, any questions or any other information board needs? If there's anything we need to move around, change, or not do. Usually too, at this time, after we're getting through a couple of these and we're almost getting ready to approve this, ask the board to really start to look at that 2026 year in particular. Make sure that it has all the projects that you want in there that want to get done for 2026. Because now we'll transition over to the operating budget side and we'll take the CIP and we'll take whatever is designated in that 2026 year and that gets allocated into the actual budget itself for next year. So again, any feedback appreciated, otherwise we'll kind of keep moving forward with that mindset.
Questions, comments? Tom?
I appreciate the conservative approach that we're taking here and, and it does, as time goes on, it will look a little better. I just, I think sometimes you put these things in here just, just to check to see if we read the document.
I never do that.
But on page 249 on the fourth paragraph, you suggested that the, in the last line, you suggest that the fire department project will run about 993 years. So I think maybe you meant 2035 instead of 3025.
Oh, sure. No, yes, you are correct. Good catch.
I think that would have helped the CIP a lot if you stretch it 993 years, but I, I, I'd like to see the financing on that.
Yep. Perfect, good catch.
Everybody else?
This isn't a round of the buildings, but I did want to report back that the park board did review their section of the CIP last week and seemed in favor of what had been proposed. Amanda, you had asked earlier, a couple of meetings ago, about the Bethel Green Acre Park Plan. And Lauren addressed it at the park, I asked on your behalf, on the board's behalf, for her to explain that during park board. So she did a really wonderful job explaining what that plan might be. I will not have her repeat it, you can watch it on OCA Media, thank you. But one of the pieces that's helpful in that, that might be helpful in our decision-making is that that could give us some stormwater credit that we will need as an MS4, see, I was listening, as an MS4 designated community. So not only would it help the park specific, it also helps the larger village earns credits that we need by transforming that back to a bit of a conservation area, stormwater retention area. And so just wanted to relay that information back to you because it is a very large number coming up and it's helpful to know.
Yeah, I appreciate that, that's helpful to know and it makes sense then to, to leave it where it is for that purpose. But you know, those are the kinds of things, you know, you dig down enough in the weeds and, I mean, credit to all of you for doing the weed work on all of this because it's a lot. But I appreciate you following up with that.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, that's moving on. Item 8C, proposal for Oregon Area Senior Center brand development from TICSE in the amount, in the total estimated amount of $28,875. Staff recommendation most to approve. Paige and Tim and Rachel.
As you may recall, in early July, the board asked that staff talk with TICSE about the potential for rebranding the senior center and exploring what that might cost. So we sat down with them and the proposal that they came up with is as part of your packet. This includes only rebranding the senior center and also materials that might be used as fundraising materials for a new building project. It doesn't include anything that would be included in the new building. So that would be a whole separate cost and a whole separate phase of the project. They propose getting public feedback from stakeholders in the community to see what people might think about would, would be what the senior center is all about. They can work their creative magic on coming up with what that might translate to in terms of a logo, a brand, a tagline, whatever. And then helping, having perhaps staff reduce the number of possibilities to something that's manageable for the community to vote on. In their words, having four or five options means that you get a bunch of options that have like 17, 18% approval and that's kind of not real helpful. So you want to get it down to a pretty small number for people to weigh in on. So now we're just asking the board, you know, do you want to pursue this project further? It's the sort of thing that if we're going to have different name, different brand, different logo, we're going to want to do that probably sooner rather than later. So it can be part of the new building push. And I will note that on our current thank you notes and business cards, what we have is a drawing of the old building.
Okay, questions for Rachel or comments? Lynn?
Do we want another comparison cost or do we feel like this is?
Go ahead, Amanda.
So I would say yes. I was reached out to by somebody else who owns a design company in Oregon and he appreciated my mentioning that we might want to open it up to other companies that do this kind of work, which I think is only fair. Unfortunately, I don't want to delay it too much, but on the other hand, TICSE isn't the only game in town. And I appreciate this very detailed comparison that they did. But you know, we might want to see, you know, what other companies might want to take a shot at it. So that's my two cents.
I don't mind getting another quote, but I don't want to base the decision solely on price. I want to base it on the value we feel like we're getting from the company. So there's, it's a little bit more subjective in my opinion because it's branding, it's not, it's not filling a pot, you know?
Right. It's, I, I would add that, it's not logo design. TICSE has a, easily a nationwide reputation and I think to some extent developing an international reputation for branding. Branding is not logo design, it's not business card design, it's, it's a completely different business. And for that reason and timeliness, I would encourage board to adopt to, okay with this tonight. I appreciate further comments. Tom?
I guess the, first, I agree totally that we need to work through the branding exercise. Probably the fastest timeline would be staff-led, but I just don't think it's going to hit all the marks in all the places that we need to hit in relationship to a total branding and really coming up with something that really will draw people to it. The timeliness element of it takes, if we go to take another, allow another bids, then we have to review. Then we have another meetings that we even see it and just it becomes too many series. And I guess I, I would support just taking this, TICSE has a great reputation and I would support that.
I meant to add, and I forgot, that in addition, TICSE would be able to take this brand and produce the signage incorporating their thoughts and ideas into the senior center. Now that, we aren't necessarily going to use TICSE to do that, but that's a natural bridge. I think TICSE did the library, is that correct or?
TICSE does not do any logo design for us or branding. What they did do for us was some of the visual elements in the new libraries. We have a custom wallpaper, the donor wall and a logo wall. But they didn't do the graphic designer or any branding for us.
Right. Additional comments? Okay, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll say no.
And I'll say no as well.
Got that?
Yep.
Thank you. Item nine, new business items for discussion and/or possible action. A proposal for partnership with Oregon Chamber of Commerce for shared employee. Staff recommendation, motion to authorize staff to negotiate agreement. Tim? And Amanda? I think this is Martin's.
Yeah, so I can do a little background here. So in the new ideas corner here, we of course had a really good, robust resolution on 2026 budget direction with a lot of different ideas and things to consider. And so this is a little bit born out of that in terms of trying to very functionally try to find a, a new revenue source. And then also provide a benefit to an important partner in our community with the Chamber of Commerce. We've, we have our recreation and, and community coordinator, which is Leanne Rhodes. She provides us with a couple of different functions. The position was hired in, in 2022. And she, there's a, there's a very good overlap between some of the things that she does with some of the things that the Chamber of Commerce needs from a staffing perspective. And perhaps maybe importantly right now, stability, having somebody that is available and present. And so talking with Elise and talking with Leanne, they're both interested and supportive of exploring this idea. See a lot of benefits to it, obviously not to the detriment of anything that is the core function of the, the position that we need to have done here at the village, but certain, certainly willing to explore it. We had some initial conversations with some of the chamber representatives. We understand they've had at least a conversation or two with their full board and they're, they're interested in it. Obviously pending a, a final agreement and approval from their board in full. But would want to get the villages blessed, village board's blessing to spend some time and effort actually negotiating and, and working on such an agreement before actually getting into it. So interested to hear some feedback and if it's something that we could pursue. I, I'll just say that the range of time that the chamber has indicated is maybe anywhere from 10 to 20 hours a week. Depending on how much, you know, they can afford, we would expect an all-in cost of salary plus benefits and fringe and everything from an hourly perspective. So anywhere from maybe potentially 20 to 50% of the position's time, depending on what they can afford. And that's anywhere from maybe 20 to upwards of $40,000 in revenue per, per year.
Amanda?
Yeah, I have a question. Is this something that we could do on like a trial basis and have Leanne track her hours and how much time she devotes and then kind of go forward after that?
Yep, yeah, we talked about that too with some of the chamber reps and their, the idea was maybe a year or two trial so that we had a good time range to kind of analyze it and see if, is it working, is it not working? And kind of gives us an outlet to say, no thanks and we'll move on.
Tim?
I think this is an excellent idea. I think this is a perfect way to approach funding challenges.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion by Tim, a second by Amanda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine B, reschedule on Monday, September 1st, 2025, regular village board meeting to Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, due to the Labor Day holiday. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. This is pretty much self-explanatory. Tim? Motion by Tim, second by Amanda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, reports of village officers, department heads and consultants. This is for information only. A village administrator report. Questions? Item B, police chief report, media release from August 1st, 2025, which was included in your packet. Item C, village, village engineering consultant report, town and country engineering, July 2025, monthly report for wastewater upgrades project. Oh, it's in your packet. And I was remiss, I, I think this is Rick, Rich's, Rick's first meeting and I.
Rick, Rich.
Rich, and that's my struggle. And if you could pronounce your last name for us.
Kosia.
Kosia, so welcome, Rick and.
We got Rich.
See? Here we go.
Fifty, fifty shots, big one.
Anyway, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Item D, finance director report, general fund balance sheet and six-month budget comparison ending June 30th, 2025, which is again in your packet. Moving on, item 11, announcements and miscellaneous business announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events and miscellaneous business. Village board may provide brief statements, but no discussion. We'll start with department heads or staff. Rachel?
I just want to say thank you to my fellow village staff for the tremendous amount of help that you all were last week when we had our fiber cut accidentally as in a construction project. And it was wonderful how much support we got out of you guys while we were without computers and phones for two days. Thank you.
Lauren, please.
I know you kind of preempted me here, Phil, but I did want to just quickly say a couple of words about Rich and give him a chance to introduce himself and, and his background. As you guys might remember, we did have his hiring on the agenda last, last meeting in early August. This has been a long time coming, hiring for this position, and we couldn't be more excited to have gotten Rich. The Air National Guard's loss is definitely our gain. He has, I think, much better capacity to explain his background than I do. So I was hoping he could speak for himself and just tell you a little bit about where he comes from.
Thank you, Lauren. My name is Rich Kosia. As Lauren said, I'm a member of the Air National Guard. I've been active duty for the last four years, working on the conversion from the F-16 airframe to the F-35. working on the conversion from the F sixteen airframe to the F thirty five. Now, as we wrap up construction, they no longer can keep me as active duty because the duty kind of comes before the necessity in the budget. So my commander advised me to start finding alternate employment, which is a nice way of saying, find a new job. Luckily, I found this job posting at the perfect time, and I look forward to bringing my skills to the village of Oregon. Thank you.
Okay, village board, announcements. Anyone? Okay, eleven B, future agenda items. This item just gives the board members the opportunity to place a topic on a future agenda for discussion and or potential action. Lynn?
I hope to get the fall schedule for the village outreach program onto the next agenda if we have space and time.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, item twelve, as our business is concluded without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.